Good evening and welcome to this Wednesday, September 10th, Board Meeting of the Ashkosh Area School District. At 6:00 PM, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Please call the roll.
Dito?
Hi.
Eliaison?
Here.
Garner?
Here.
Herzog?
Here.
Lumberger?
Here.
Saganak?
Here.
Here. This evening, we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by two students from Oakwood, Jackson and Faith Gallica. If you could please step forward and please follow them, if you would all stand and follow them in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Good.
Public hearing on proposed budget for 2014-15, call to order. Do I again have to call me into order? We're already there, okay. Reading of published budget notice. A budget hearing will be held on Wednesday, September 10th, 2014, at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of Ashkosh Area School District Administration Center, 215 South Eagle Street, Ashkosh, Wisconsin. A detailed copy of the budget will be available on Monday, September 8th, 2014, at the Administration Center or by contacting Sue Schnorr at (920) 424-0122. The summary of the budget is printed below. Do I need to read anything else? All right. Presentation of 2014-15 budget. Sue.
Good evening. I sent you the budget book yesterday, I think. And so, I'm going to start by going all the way to page 17. Let's kind of appropriate that, a little calculator out there in the corner. Page 17 is the page showing the comparables. We compare ourselves to like-sized school districts, athletic conference, and our neighbors. And just a couple of things I want to point out, that from the tax levy for our comparables, we're still low, but we changed in a few places. In the athletic and compared to athletic conference and our neighbors, we used to be the lowest, now we're second from the lowest. And in like-sized school district, we used to be the second from the lowest, and now we're fourth from the lowest. But you have to remember that 1314 was the first year of our Oklaun payment that hit the tax levy. It was the first year of doing the $25 million energy exemption criteria. So, you know, I think considering you did both of those in one year, to keep those standings, it's pretty good. On the cost per member, we actually moved to the lowest position. In like-sized school districts, compared to like-sized school districts, we stayed the same, but in athletic conference and neighboring districts, we actually moved to the lowest position. So, we have the lowest cost per member compared to our athletic comparables in our neighboring. And this is from 1213, unfortunately, it's a couple of years. That's just the most recent data that's available on the DPI webpage. Page 20 shows where the money comes from, and it's pretty consistent, otherwise, other than just a little bit of shift, our property taxes went up 1% to being 38% of our revenues. Equalization aid went down, and so that now makes up 48% of our revenues. And they're going to go up and down the same. The revenue limit controls property taxes and state aid together. So, if state aid goes up, your property taxes have to go down. If state aid goes down, your property taxes can go up within that revenue limit calculation. So, it makes sense that if one shifts, the other is going to shift by an equal amount. Other state revenues went up 1% to 8%, otherwise, all the other revenues in that pie chart stayed consistent to where they were before. I talked about all of these things at the budget workshop we had, but I guess I just want to point out from a public hearing standpoint, that per pupil categorical aid was, the first time that aid started was in 1314, the current year, we're just finishing, but it's going up by $75 per pupil to $150 per pupil. So, that actually increases our budget by $728,000, which is the largest increase in any revenue in this year's budget. Page 21 talks about where the money goes, and none of these percentages have changed from 1314. We still spend about 86% of our budget on salaries and fringes. The state average tends to hover in the low 80%, but I think what that shows for Ashkosh is that you cut everything else to avoid cutting people. But, you know, the 86% and the state average is about 80 is pretty close. Purchase services remains the same, it's 14%. That sounds pretty large, but there's some really big-ticket items in purchase services, things like utilities, our payments to our 4K providers falls in there, our transportation contract, our custodial services contract, open enrollment tuition, all of that stuff falls under purchase services. And then, all the other percentages remained the same as well. And I went through this at the budget workshop, and little of this has changed. Our salary increase is about 4% over last year, and this includes a 1.46 CPI increase for all of our employees, steps in longevity for support staff, and the transition to the strategic compensation design plan for our teachers. Benefit increases are up about 8%, and obviously, all the benefits associated with those salary increases go up, plus, we are forecasting a 10% increase in our health insurance January 1. We were just told that it'd be closer to 9%, so there might be a little bit of flexibility there. And then, we also talked about this at the budget workshop, these are some of the new positions that are in this budget. I think we've since added a kindergarten section, so this isn't an all-inclusive list, but it's the major new areas of focus or new staffing for this year. And this budget is not a balanced budget, it does use fund balance, but it is a use of fund balance that's a designated use of fund balance, and we talked about this at the workshop as well. From the years you had that referendum, revenue limit extension referendum of 1.3 million for maintenance, there's some of that money left that's carried over. There was a Microsoft settlement that we still have some money from that's carried over, and all these are included as expenditures in this budget. And then, the board approved taking some innovative programs out of this budget, like the STEM coordinator, and then, some of the costs to transition to the strategic compensation plan is coming out of fund balance. Then, if you turn to pages like 22 through 32 are like the budget numbers of the budget book, and those first pages from 22 to 32 shows our budget by object. The state has an account code called WOOFER. It's a 17-digit code that every expenditure and every revenue that comes into a district has to have that account code associated. So, we can print reports by various things within that. There's a fund, as you know, we have different funds, there's a location code, so we can code things to specific locations, and this is the object code. It really tells what it's about. Is it a salary? Is it a benefit? Is it a purchase service? And then, following the expenditures are the revenues, and the revenues are by source, which means the origin, who are we getting the money from? So, the first 10 pages show our budget by object. And following that, on page 32, 33, is a new page I added this year. I took a lot out of this budget, this book, this time, just because it was outdated, or I just didn't have time to update it, but this is a new page in the budget book. It's actually page 33, not page 32. It's the same budget, but it's by function, and function is a six-digit part of the budget code, and that tells really why we're doing something. Special education, regular education, physical education, those are the whys. So, you would have a 100 salary in a $140,000 physical education is how the count structure works. So, this is the exact same budget, and the numbers hopefully total the other ones, I think they do, I checked that. It's just funds 10 and 27. I didn't go through all the other funds and do it by function. Some of the other funds, like debt service, food service, don't have a lot of variety and functions, it's all the same function. So, I just took funds 10 and 27 and just looked at it a different way. Then, following that is the tax levy scenarios. This hasn't changed from what I presented at the workshop. It shows a low of possible 59 cent increase and a high of 76. The second scenario assumes a reduced, reduction in state aid, and it also assumes that you implement the energy efficiency exemption. But currently, the energy efficiency exemption, if you go for the 14.5 million, actually adds 16 cents to the levy, and the disparity between these two scenarios is 17 cents. So, depending upon what happens with state aid, this could still be, it could still be higher than the scenarios here. And then, the last page of the budget book is our Fund 80 notice. Fund 80 is our community services fund, it's also where we house all the expenditures for our recreation department. This used to fall under the revenue limits, and the state legislature, in their infinite wisdom, took it out of revenue limits, so you could levy whatever you wanted to in Fund 80. And so, then, creative boards and school boards decided it was a place to start shifting money, to save money in Fontaine. You, as an Ashkosh board, have not done that, in my opinion. I think that the costs that you have in Fund 80 are very legitimate Fund 80 costs. But to try to get a handle on that, the legislature did a couple of things. They have DPIs coming up with rules and regulations as to what can be in Fund 80. We're currently writing a testimony, or a documentation for DPI to give our opinion on some of those rules. They have you publish the notice on your webpage, and as part of your budget book, you have to include this Fund 80 notice in it. So, this is our legal notice.
Actually, I did have one question about that, which is, we've remained flat for years now in our Fund 80, and how long can we do that? Surely, at some point, we're going to need, there's got to be, I guess I commend you for your ability to come up with a flat budget for year after year, but eventually, I'm assuming some costs are going to have to be rising.
Right, because salaries and benefits go up, the cost of running those programs go up, meaning in the short term...
The cost of materials and supplies go up.
Correct, correct. In the short term, this budget doesn't use fund balance, but, you know, in the short term, we've thought of using fund balance, you can potentially increase fees, none of those are favorable things, but hopefully, the legislature will look at taking off that levy cap going forward.
And we really do have to compliment Al Lenning for his very, very good management of that program. He is masterful at working through that process, and this is one of the areas that also, as Sue indicated, that he has worked very hard to protect fees against student-run activities, but charging fees to adult engagement activities, which then allows a little pressure relief by having the burden be on adults who participate in activities versus harming children through the process. So, my compliments to Al in working, and Al reports directly to Sue, and the two of them have continued that tradition of being very frugal in that process.
He watches this budget very closely. The criteria for being in Fund 80 that they have in general are, it must be open to the general public, all those activities are. They have to be outside that usual K-12 instructional day, and then, they have to be funded with a user fee, a direct levy, or a combination of both. So, in those, they'll be coming up with more specific criteria, but based on that general criteria, all those programs meet that. This was a caution that I gave you at the workshop, that, you know, this is still a work in progress. I'm still working on line by line, kind of going through to go through things with a fine-tooth comb to make sure we haven't missed anything, or that things aren't in the wrong place, or weren't keyed in wrong, so we're still kind of making sure we're doing that. Obviously, we don't have pupil counts yet, for sure. We don't have open enrollment numbers finalized, equalized values, state aid, all of those are just as a miss at this point. And a reminder of the budget calendar, this is the budget hearing, obviously, the 24th, you'll approve an original budget. On the 8th, we'll come forward with any updates that we might have, and then, the 22nd, hopefully, if we have all the information we need, we will approve a tax levy. Open up to any questions or comments?
And we should also comment that, bearing in mind that we await the final state aid levy sort of balancing across the state before we can deal with that issue, and that's why Sue's caution on the 22nd is subject to control outside of ours, and that comes from DPI at the state.
They have to certify state aid by October 20th. Now, they usually do it earlier than that, but they have to certify by the 20th, so if they're running behind at all, that would be Monday of the board week, so hopefully, we could still pull it off, but we'll have to see.
In your two levy scenarios, if we, the first scenario does not include the energy efficiency exemption, and it does not include, and it, I should say, the second one, the first one doesn't include, the second one does, and it also includes limited aid.
Correct.
If the aid was correct, and we did proceed with the energy efficiency exemption, where do we fall between those two?
If the state aid comes in exactly as I projected, then the second scenario would be high by a penny.
Okay.
So, it would be within those, that range.
So, the energy efficiency is the majority of that second one?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
They're like 16 cents of the 17 cents.
Right. I just wanted, I heard you say it earlier, I just wanted to make sure that I said it correctly.
And so, you still have a couple of opportunities to review that dollar amount for the energy efficiency as well. I mean, it's our recommendation that you go forward the whole thing, but even though you're passing that resolution tonight, you're pressing a resolution that says not to exceed.
Are you getting any kind of sense at all from Madison on which way they're going to do? I mean, certainly, they have this huge revenue shortfall, that doesn't bode well for local municipal governments.
It doesn't, but they haven't said anything about, to my knowledge, I haven't heard any rumbling about taking the money out of school aids.
And what that deficit is a projected deficit for the next biennium that commences next July 1, is, that is the future, that's a rollover of all costs that move forward, I believe, so.
Our aid projection might go down slightly, just because we didn't spend our whole budget. It looks like we're going to be about a $2 million end-of-the-year revenues over expenditures, and most of that is due to not spending in some areas of the budget, and most of that is carryover. It's all underspent in areas that we allow carryover. So, the majority of that will be carryover, however, that does affect our state aid. If you don't spend it, you don't get aided on it. But I also was conservative, I didn't use the DPI projection, I was conservative on that.
Other questions, for Sue? All right, seeing none, we will move on. Thank you, Sue. Guidelines for public comment, at this time, we will take public comment, and the guidelines are that you would state your name and address clearly, state your name and address, and the topic to which you are addressing. If you are acting as a spokesperson for a particular group or individuals, please indicate that group that you represent. Please limit your comments to the time allotted, which is 15 minutes. Public comments, rather than questions and answers, this is not a dialogue, is what they're trying to indicate, but it's purely merely a comment period for the public. Please state clearly and concisely the matters of concern. Remember that the use of specific names and district personnel may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at (424) 0160 to direct your comments to the appropriate administrator. Do we have anyone coming forth to do so? All right, seeing none, we will move on to adjourned the public hearing for the 2014-15 budget. Could I get a motion? Could I get a second?
Tagged.
Please call the roll.
Dito?
Hi.
Dito, hi. Eliaison?
Hi.
Eliaison, hi. Garner?
Hi.
Garner, hi. Herzog?
Hi.
Herzog, hi. Lumberger?
Hi.
Lumberger, hi. Saganak?
Hi.
Saganak, hi. Whedon Haft?
Hi.
Whedon Haft, hi. Motion carried.
All right, we are now back in regular session. Compliance with open meeting law notification, what do I have to do for that?
The meeting's a problem.
Okay. Roll call, we have to do that again? Okay, please call the roll.
Dito?
Here.
Eliaison?
Here.
Garner?
Still here.
Herzog?
Here.
Lumberger?
Here.
Saganak?
Here.
Whedon Haft?
Here.
We have a call.
All right, tonight, we have, under recognition, the Oklaun Elementary Schools' LEED Gold Certificate. This will be presented by Sue Schnorr and Scott Johankman.
We have Mark Sherpart from Bray Architects here to present, and Jeff Bray, Bray Architects here, to tell a little bit about the LEED certification and what that means, and then present the certificates to Scott.
Hi, I'm Mark Sherpart with Bray Architects. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to present the Gold Certificate for LEED on the Oklaun Elementary School Project. Little background about what LEED is, LEED stands for Leadership in Environment and Energy Design. So, it starts with the design, and we, from the very beginning, we worked with the school district in regard to what we did with the old building, we have to recycle, we do whatever we can to recycle and for the project. Site design involves landscaping that doesn't need water. We have bike racks, we have access to the bike racks, they all have to be close to the school, within a certain distance. There's other issues like a shower facility to encourage anybody who wants to use a bike to come there, and staff can use that shower. These are all requirements that LEED has, and you get a point for each one of these requirements, so. Our initial thought was, we were trying to get a silver certification on the project, and that's 50 points or higher. Through the design and through the construction process, we reached 68 points, so that bumped us into the Gold Certification, so we're excited about that. Other areas in LEED involve water efficiency, those are all low-flow toilet fixtures. A big part of the design was the geothermal system, so that gave us quite a few points and gave me an energy-efficient building. Materials and resources are another area where you specify products within the 500-mile radius of your site to encourage, you know, less gas use, less transportation. Part of the whole process is trying to create an indoor environment that's healthy for the occupants of that building, so that is very important to the design. And then, we asked the district to assist us, and Scott, in regard to a program for the school to encourage and teach about energy and recycling, so they've scouted more on that than I know, so. So, on behalf of Bray Architects and our consultants, Merman Engineering and Frederickson Engineering, and on behalf of Myron Construction, who are a big part of the construction phase of the LEED program, they have to keep track of, you know, recycling materials and all the documentation in regard to the products used in the building, which have low emissions, so you have a healthy indoor environment, so.
Some of the other benefits that we see when we work with LEED and work with the school district, it does save the school district money over the long run, because it is a more efficient building, the lower cost of energy use, materials that we're utilizing are easier to maintain and clean, such as the groundface walls in the building, so they don't have to be painted, we're not repainting the school every year. So, it lowers your custodial costs every year for that facility, and lowers your costs overall for it. So, that really also benefits the community by going LEED, by reducing the overall operational costs on a facility like this. So, each year, you save money in that facility.
As was mentioned, we're very excited for the opportunity for the school to be a teaching tool of LEED certification. The kiosk that we put in place as you enter the building in the hallway has the format and icons, pictures, actual motion images for students to see the geothermal in action, and actually, to see live temperatures of the air that's being pulled into the system, the temperature as it's being brought up from 300 feet underground back into the building, and then, the temperature that's going into different rooms of the building, from the cafeteria to the gymnasium, and to see that in motion as it is happening, it's going to be a wonderful teaching tool for the students, not only of Oklaun, but we've had other schools come to visit, such as North High School, and see the building last year. We have some things updated, and we're excited for you to come in to learn about LEED features of a building. So, we're very excited for the future, not just as the building was being built, but now, how it will be utilized to come.
So.
His plaque that goes along.
Okay. There's some mounting practice for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Along with that, we framed a couple photos, and just the list of the points and what category you ever achieved. So, that's for you, and just a photo of the building, so.
And the certificate itself.
Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to many years of use of that facility and to its successful operation.
Okay, yes, you can put your box.
Put it back in the box to safely get it to. All right, next, under the board's president, board president's report, is the introduction of our two student representatives this evening. Joining us again from last year is David Mathers, and tonight, new to us is Catherine Drina, and both of them will be, I assume, proceeding tonight with an update on what's been going on at the two high schools.
Okay, great. So, I'm telling you what's up at Ashkosh North. My name is Catherine Drina, and you'll have to excuse me, I caught my back-to-school cold. And I'm student council president, and I'm also a senior. I participate in many activities at Ashkosh North, like band, drama, tennis, Polaris, and French clubs. I plan on going to college, though I am still undecided where, and my goal for this year is to make Ashkosh North Student Council the best anyone can remember. So, we start off with our sign dedication. The class of 1979 wanted to give back, because they made so many great memories at Ashkosh North, and they decided that the way they do that was in the form of a four-by-32-foot sign, which we unveiled over the summer, and it looks incredible. It really adds to the outside of Ashkosh North, so we thank the class of 1979. Student council also put on a welcome-back staff breakfast before the school year began. We did a healthy twist this year, but here's the staff picture, they're making a hashtag. And when we ever, when we post on our social media, we like to say hashtag "North Pride." Also, the first day of school, we had a freshman orientation. It began with music playing and citizens-first, bank handing out snacks and water. The Ashkosh North Student Council led tours of highlights of the school while the other half of the freshmen were hanging out and having fun. And that made them feel at home, and we were really excited to do it, because we got lots of positive feedback. AMP, or Awakening My Potential, is the extended learning program at Ashkosh North. It's open before and after school, and there's now a writing lab to help in all sorts of subjects, and we're really excited about it. I sometimes help in the writing lab, and the kids are so happy to be having help and really want to learn, and it's very, such a positive experience. A little update on North Athletics, all fall sports are in swing, and 326 students total are participating. Some highlights were Amy Smith, she's in the lower-left, took 12th out of 120 golfers at Sheboygan last Monday, and then, number-one singles tennis player Savannah Prane took first, and Leslie Kootnik, number-two singles player, took second, and actually, my doubles partner and I, we took third, we played through doubles, at the Stoughton Invite last Saturday. North football is also going well, with our most recent win against Wisconsin Rapids, and cross-country finish- And cross-country finished with two people placing at the NINA Invite last weekend. And then, now we're just kind of doing what's coming up. Homecoming Week is our big thing, especially for student council. We have a Candy Land theme. The dance is on the 11th. Teen Read Week is coming up, which we promote in several ways. We usually do some, like, designated reading time and get people sort of fired up about reading. The North Fall Choir Concert is also happening, and they're, it's always a fun to go see them. The Fall Orchestra Concert, which the band, the Wind Ensemble, also participates in, will be on the 23rd of October. And Spartan Spooktacular, where we bring in little kids, so it could be kindergarten, preschool through, like, about fifth grade, can come in and have a safe place to trick-or-treat, and they really enjoy it. All the clubs make a different themed room, and then they get candy, and it's pretty cute to see all the little kids in their costumes. So, yeah, that's kind of what's been up and what's coming up at Ashkosh North, and as always, it's a great day to be a Spartan.
So, it's good to see all of you again. Yep, I'm Dave Mathers, their student representative. One thing that we do differentiate ourselves from North is that we have a government, and so what we do with these elected positions is now we're starting to institute a student council within that student government. So, they'll get on to my next slide with homecoming. So, what we plan on doing is I introduced, and me and my colleagues introduced, the committee system from last year, and that's how we organized and tackled a bunch of different things, from going to city meetings, to the parades, just from doing a bunch of organizational, different things that we had to do. We are now looking to actually have the voting members have a student council to support below the actual volunteer work that goes on. So, we will be having a student government committees, such as student outreach committee, parade committee, decorations committee, and a pep rally committee. Now, we're starting to market with the student outreach committee. How can we get many people of West to actually join us and actually start making homecoming? Because we want this year to be one that will be known for years. So, one thing that we did differently to just start off right off the bat was we actually had the students vote on a theme. So, we came to the top four decisions that the government decided, and what we used is we used through Gmail, a voting system. We said, okay, students, what do you want as the theme? So, we came to a majority that we want space, or drops a Jupiter, and it was a North theme last year for homecoming, and that's what our theme will be this year for homecoming. And we're already preparing. We had our first meeting Tuesday, which was really, really effective, and Monday, we always have the officer meetings, so we're already getting on top of that and starting to plan forward. Now, since it's the start of the year, everything's starting to get into motion. We already have cross-country football going on, girls' swimming, girls' tennis, girls' golf, volleyball, and boys' soccer. And I did go to the cross-country meet that was at NINA last week, and one of my good friends, Jake Ross, placed eighth overall, which is phenomenal for actually running like that. With football, it was also convenient because it was also at the same day in NINA, so the cross-country guys and the girls got together. We all went to NINA to cheer on the football team. Girls' swimming, I've been hearing great things. Girls' tennis, many, many great things still happening, as well as volleyball, girls' golf, and boys' soccer. There's the Ashkosh West Booster Club fundraiser. That's going to be held October 4th at Lakes Breeze Golf Course. Now, just for the picnics, it's $8, but we do encourage everyone to come to actually go play a great game of golf and have fun with that, really start participating in the booster clubs. Another thing on our agenda is the blood drive coming up. So, this is September 16th at Ashkosh West High School, and it's our first blood drive of the year. We really love to organize these things because we get just enormous amount of participation among these. So, just like the committee systems we have in place for homecoming, they still slide over and translate into different events, such as the blood drive. We already made many posters to put around West, and as always, we're encouraging the students to participate. We even give different scholarships for amount of, like, gallons or amount of pints donated. So, food and drink are provided, which is usually why we have such great participation among the students. But, yeah, it should be, it looks like it's going to be a great show out of people. Otherwise, have a great Wildcat Wednesday, and I'll keep you updated very soon to what's going on next. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. On that same token, I guess I have at least one more thing that I wish to discuss in my president's report, and that is our superintendent evaluation. The Board of Education, last Wednesday, came together to complete its annual evaluation of our superintendent, Stan Mack. We did so. We evaluate him based on seven professional standards, and the board determined that Stan Mack's performance was strong in the areas of community relations, strategic planning, business and finance, and personal qualities, and the areas of educational leadership and staff personnel, staff and personnel relations, relationships, excuse me, and his relationship with the Board of Education. The board determined that his performance was indeed satisfactory. The district goals, which you actually will see the new ones this evening, the board felt that superintendent had done an outstanding job of attaining the goals set by the board for the superintendent in 2013. On tonight's agenda, we have new goals for him for 2014-15, but we would like to thank Mr. Mack for his leadership and his commitment to the community and the district.
Thank you, sir.
And we look forward to the upcoming year.
And I would like to express my appreciation. As I said to a group of individuals today, that today was two years, two months, and 10 days of service in the school district, right down to the precise, we didn't count the hours, but I have grown, as I spoke to a group early this morning at 7:30, that my attachment to both the community and the school district is one that makes for a wonderful daily experience. My coming to work every day, I would say that there is never a day that I don't look forward to coming to work. I enjoy the leadership team that I work with directly here in the building, but also the leadership team across the district, and have a great appreciation for the outstanding performance by our teachers and the work and support that our support staff provide across the district. It's truly a joy to work in this district, but most of all, it makes a difference because, as I said in my introductory comments last week, we have since the spring of 2012, a board that knows how and understands how to work together, and working together makes a difference in how well both superintendent, the administrative team can work, and how we demonstrate to the community modeling the behavior that we would expect of our students, we expect in our community. And having this board work as well together to accomplish many things would, it would not be possible without a school board that has demonstrated to the community that it knows how to work together and that it models the behavior that we look for in civilness, in decency, and respect for one another throughout the community. I hear nothing but positive reports coming from the community on how we work together, and that, to me, is a real positive attribute, and it's thanks to the school board, to the executive team, as well as to all of our administrative leaders, and certainly our teachers who every day are serving children across the district. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That actually ends my president's report. Now, go on to the superintendent's.
And what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask Sue to step in. One of the issues we've been struggling with, and she's just going to kind of give you a little brief report on some of our nightmares of the last number of days on transportation and our continued work on that, and we don't have final answers, but the bottom line is we're working on some of the snafus that have occurred in transportation. Sue?
I just want to go over the main cause of the problems that we've had and where we are at with solutions. I first want to begin by apologizing to our families. We take the transportation and safety of our students very seriously, and we are very sorry for the frustrations and inconveniences this problem has caused. We are committed to fixing it and taking measures to prevent similar situations from happening in the future. What happened was on Friday afternoon, August 29th, the Friday right before we started school, Cobusen Bus uploaded a student file from Infinite Campus. This process wiped out all of the information in their software program called Versatran. All the routing information was gone. We have since discovered it was a Versatran problem, not an Infinite Campus problem, so I do want to stress that, that it was not an Infinite Campus problem, it was a Versatran problem. Then, when Cobusen went to do a backup, because you have a backup file if something goes wrong, their backup was not working either and had technical issues. So, they basically had to redo all of the routing information that they spent the last two weeks putting into the computer. They pretty much spent the whole entire Labor Day weekend restoring as much as they could, and they continued to run into issues with Versatran. Versatran also did a major mapping update this summer, and their customer service has been really poor through all of this. So, one of the solutions is we're going to be looking at different transportation software as one possible solution to this. But needless to say, Tuesday arrived with all the routes back in their program. Problems included students not being picked up, not being in route for the afternoon, not taken to the right location after school, because a lot of the daycare information was also wiped out in this program as well. Unfortunately, our four-year-old kindergarten and our special ed students were hit the hardest by this program, because both of those areas, we do a lot of individual routing, and all of that information was wiped out. And, you know, our 4K students are all new to the district, and so all of those had to be, they were new names, new routes, new people. It's really, really unfortunate that our youngest students and those with their first experience with the Ashkosh School District had to be affected the most. We want our first experience for these students to be a positive one, and unfortunately, we didn't present a lot of our parents a positive impression, so we were going to have to work fairly hard to change that impression. Cobusen continues to resolve issues. Next week, we will meet with Cobusen. Both the local staff here and their corporate level are committed to meeting with us, and we are going to review all that went wrong. We're going to review how we handled the situation, and we want to plan how we can prevent similar situations from happening in the future. So, we start next year, a year from now, on a much better foot. We also are going to get out new busing letters to our families next week. You know, this issue was exacerbated by the fact that our population is transient, and I don't mean to make excuses, because we don't want to make excuses, but just to show you one more issue that hurt the problem, is from August 1st to September 3rd, the technology team made 925 address changes, and that's just grades K through 8. The high school puts in their own, but they estimate that there was well over 2,000 address changes that went in in that 30-day period. Parents made an additional 203 address changes themselves through the parent portal. So, that just added one more level of complexity to the whole issue. So, again, we want to apologize to our families, and then if there are parents that are still having issues or concerns, they can contact me directly. My number is 424-0122.
Thank you, Sue. We simply felt we could not go on with discussion. We need to be upfront, and I compliment Sue, and all of our team has been working very hard to respond and to meet with every individual that has had a concern, and both in phone calls as well as in-person meetings to discuss the issues that we've inherited through this somewhat of an opening-year nightmare with transportation. With that, I'll move on to what is far better news, and that is the superintendent's good news report. Carl Trager Middle School students participated in a scavenger hunt as one of the Trager life activities to promote the PBIS system, and that activity, you should be aware that across our district, our schools have been introducing with varying special activities, PBIS introductions. Three Ashkosh-area school district schools have received recognition from the Wisconsin Title I Recognition Program. Roosevelt Elementary, Washington Elementary, and Webster Stanley were recognized for demonstrating success for educating students from low-income families. The Wisconsin Title I School of Recognition is an honorary award for schools that have been successful in educating students from low-income families. This is the eighth consecutive year for Washington Elementary School. If we understand and know why we use Washington frequently as the model for how to deliver literacy and other instruction, that's precisely why. Success for eight consecutive years under now two principal leaders through that process, and we recognize an outstanding staff who are so dedicated at that building. Tony Evers will host an awards program at the State Capitol on October 13th to further recognize Title I Schools of Recognition awards, and each school will receive a plaque and $500 for their school use in the future. With that, the last is simply activities that the superintendent's been engaged in in the last two weeks, and we look forward to sharing more good news in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Next, we have other reports. If there are members of the committees that have reports to give.
Facilities and Finance met on August 28th. It was the day after our board meeting. We went over the budget variance report, and as Sue stated tonight, we're going to have just over $2 million surplus, but most of that will be carryover. Update on Oklaun's spending, there's currently $125,000 remaining in the project. There has been a request for a storage shed outside of the building for all the equipment that they need to maintain the grounds. Not sure if that's going to go through or not. Sue Schnorr indicated that she will review any money that's left by the end of the year, and that technically, any remaining funds will have to go back into debt service, so. Open enrollment survey, Superintendent Mack's working with UW-Ashkosh to get a survey going to better understand why students enroll out of our district, and taking a third-party independent survey of that would probably be the best way to do that. It was requested to begin the process this fall. McKinstry update, it was after the board meeting, so most of you are aware of the new projects that are coming up. Let's see. We talked a lot about the projects as they're coming up, and because we can use the energy exemption, and a lot of this is, a lot of these projects revolve around efficient energy use. What is the viability of the district using its own energy? And it was also because we talked about the previous school board meeting, that we were going to be purchasing energy from a third-party independent seller of energy out of Illinois. So, basically, our new, our new Randy, what's his position? The new custodian?
Director of.
Director of.
Building grounds, right.
Okay. He was saying that he had implemented, I think it was solar and wind, in a different school district, and that without grants and partners with local utilities, it's the capital expenditure is just too big. And so, yes, we should look at it, yes, we should continue to talk about it, but it's going to be a tough one. McKinstry did suggest maybe using solar poles for external lighting, so we can talk some more about that, and maybe looking at spending money more in terms of renewable energy. While it might not save us energy, it's one of those things where maybe we should just do it anyways. We did talk a little bit about how we communicate all the things that are going on with all of the McKinstry projects, and how do we keep that communication open, putting things on the website, maybe doing tours, but multiple formats is what we're talking about doing, and they're going to help us a lot with that. And then, let's see. Oh, the energy exemption that we're looking at, at this point, is about 14 and 1/2 million for all of the projects that we went through in our last school board meeting. And then, the last item was the Lakeside Project update. We looked at several designs. Superintendent Mack has been meeting with the town of Black Wolf because the current design right now, well, we can't afford to put in a gymnasium, a full gymnasium. Right now, we can have just the cafeteria, which is what is there now. So, we were talking with the town of Black Wolf to see if they would want to partner with us in some way to maybe help fund that gymnasium at that school. And then, Sue Schnorr also let us know that we might have the authority as a board to, that's similar to the energy project, where we could borrow funds, and maybe that that would open up some avenues for us to put the gym in, because we really believe that that's important for that school. And that's all we did.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone else have a report of a subcommittee? Seeing none, then we will move on to workshop number one.
All right. So, we are so excited that we get to share the PK-12 Supportive Alternative Education Plan with all of you. It has been a very long ride. It has been a very long ride with this plan, and we've been working on it for a couple of years, and so we feel like it's very comprehensive. And one of the things you'll see then is, with that comprehension, that we're now able to kind of lay the groundwork of where we want to go, and what kind of data, additional data we want to collect moving forward, because we think that'll be very helpful. To get us started, though, I want to introduce, we have Lisa Leader with us today, and then, of course, you know Julie and Dr. Giggly.
All right. I'm going to start with why the plan. There are many meaningful reasons why we're coming to you with a PK Supportive Alternative Education Plan. And first of all, I just want to point out that we wanted a way to communicate how the structure, programs, and strategies that we are using really do vary by student, and market that that way. We also wanted to utilize programs that we are using, wonderful programs, but they were not previously in our plan. After collaborating with the Department of Instruction, we were advised to focus on those programs like PBIS, RTI, wonderful things that we're doing that we're not celebrating. So those were included. We also wanted a process to identify students, a consistent process to identify students that were at risk or needing alternative education services. Along with that, we brought together a team, a very extensive team. It was made up of principals, central office administrators, pupil service staff, we had social workers, counselors, program support teachers, a variety of positions that came together to look at, what are we doing really well, and what could we do better, and how can we go about putting that into our plan? And then, along with that, too, honestly, we wanted to seek out resources. With updating our plan, where can we find funds from the state to actually be utilizing our programs better? And then lastly, too, we need to be in compliance with what the state statute was telling us we need to do. So many reasons why we wanted to keep going forward with our tone of education.
So as we started to develop the plan, and we had actually 26-plus members that were working on this, we had lots of discussions about the mission and the philosophy behind this. And as we started to work on this plan, in the, in actually the Oshkosh Area School District Strategic Plan, we had a goal of having this done last fall. But as we started to dive into it, we thought that this was a perfect opportunity to bring together all of the pieces that we believe in the Oshkosh Area School District that makes this a great district, and that we really look at the whole child as we deliver educational services. So we really wanted our plan to reflect that any individual student at any time may be struggling, and do we have services, programs, and ways to support that child from PK, as we talked about our four-year-old kindergarten, all the way through graduation. And so we really wanted to make sure that we were comprehensively looking at that. We also wanted to make sure that the plan included our philosophies around response to instruction. We wanted to make sure that we included that we believe high-quality instruction and really taking care of the needs of the child in the classroom was expressed within this plan, but that when a child needs more, that we add those layers of support, and if a child needs something alternative, thus the alternative education, or they needed an additional pathway to get where they need to go, that we have our programs and services aligned up to deliver that. So our philosophy is really, once again, we want to make sure we address the needs of all children at any time during their schooling career when they need it. And so going on to program plan components, one other thing that we talked about is that we have a lot of interventions, services, and programming, and partnerships within the Oshkosh Area School District, but we didn't always know exactly where all those were. And so one task that we did is we put together all the program plan components, and we put it together in a program enrollment matrix. So a very easy-to-read, this is the program, this is location, these are the students that are eligible for it, and how can you access that information? And we tried to, and we did try, we put it into the different, how do I want to?
Matrix.
Yeah, the matrix, the grade levels, the PK 4, 5, 8, and 9, 12, tried to divide it out, but really make it easy. In your board packet, there is the draft of the full plan, along with a copy of that program enrollment matrix. And that enrollment matrix, once approved along with this plan, is, will be posted on the Oshkosh Area School District website, and we'll also have easy access to all of our staff members and our educators, so that they can access this enrollment matrix to see where exactly all those programs, services, and interventions are available.
So when you're talking about access, you're talking about access of teachers and people at the district, not necessarily individual parents?
Well, the audience is also the parents, too. So as, so that you, so that if a parent's going, you know what, I want to know more about this, because we really, once again, tried to make it very comprehensive and line up if my child is having an issue with something with social-emotional, then where can I, where could I possibly access services? And we have everything in there, from services they can access within the school, to community partners that can also help them with that. So it was, the audience is really our parents, community, and our staff members. So we were really trying to make it a one-stop shop and line things up. So going into the program plan components, I'm going to turn it over to Kim to talk about some key pieces, the PK 4 components.
So the PK 4, we just put our, one piece of the continuum of support, but what we really truly have is we have a continuum of support for literacy, we have one for math, and then we have one for behavior. And so all three of those pieces, of course, is our response to intervention, and you can see, it goes from the universal instruction, which we believe is very key to everything that we do. We need everybody doing best practice at that universal instruction, but of course, if a child needs more, we have the additional, different types of interventions that can take place. Also, at the elementary level, we also are aware of where we are with attendance, and make sure that we are in touch with our parents, and of course, social workers also get involved with that piece. Another piece is the social-emotional growth, and again, part of that might be through behavior, but you'll also hear about PBIS and conscious discipline, and some of the things that we are really doing to help support our students, as well as some of our outside partners. You've heard about CATALPA and some of the services that they are meeting, along with some of our community partners, to help support as well. So we're very excited about what we have for our PK through 4th grade.
In addition to that, before we leave PK 4, PK 4 is not required for us to talk about within an at-risk plan. We're going beyond the state requirements when we're talking about a supportive plan for children at risk, because in the state requirements, it requires us to identify starting in 5th grade, but we feel like that the early intervention and making sure that we are being preventative and we are looking at those components early on was very important to us. Going into 5, 8, we, that's where the piece about with children at risk comes into play in looking at criteria. And in one key area that the state has helped us with and helped us identify as far as data, is a dropout early warning system. And so they, we look at data around attendance, around student achievement, and there's some key indicators that are saying, this student is, once again, at risk of dropping out. This is the early warning system, we're saying, hey, we need to take a closer look. It doesn't mean that's going to be reality, but let's just make sure this child doesn't slip through the cracks. And a big component of our middle school level, when it comes to this PK-12 Supportive and Alt Ed program plan, is community partnerships. For example, we have a partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of Oshkosh with a middle school mentoring program. We're in partnership with them. We help identify students that need that additional support, and we partner with them to provide that support outside of school, make sure they get to actually the Boys and Girls Club, they are assigned a mentor, they get homework help, and they get all these other supports that, just as a school, that we can't provide. So, and there's other things, truancy intervention programs, but you're going to see in the 5, 8 piece of the plan, and in the program matrix, you're going to see a lot of community partnerships, because that's where we're starting to bring in that extra layers of support, and that's in 5, 6, 7, and 8. And I'm going to turn it over to Lisa to highlight some of the high school areas, and community partnerships are also important in this area.
And like Julie mentioned, we are going above and beyond, so not just using the state at-risk criteria, but also the guidelines and expectations of our district. And with that in mind, too, our district having the philosophy, everything should be data-driven, we're putting in as much research and obviously collaboration, too. So at the high school level, we do have many effective at-risk programs going on. For example, our New Start Program, our Riverside Program, our Second Chance Program. We have programs for expelled students, as well as also our AAM program, as Catherine mentioned, and E-Academy also, too. So we're looking at always expanding on those, as well as finding best practices in those programs, too. To identify students, we're looking at, obviously, RTI in literacy and math, as well as using attendance, truancy data, behavior data as well, too, the DUS system, as Julie mentioned also. And then again, that state criteria. The community partnership is very, very important in this area, because we are using those resources to continue to build our programs, as well as make our students college, community, and career-ready. So I think as a district, we are very, very blessed, the partnerships that we have that continue to support us. On an average, I receive probably two or three phone calls a day from parents outside of the district, inquiring about our Alt Ed programs. So to answer your question, Mr. Bienenhoff, I think our matrix, it'd be very important to put that out to parents, simply because of the inquiries that we're getting that way. And then the support, too, again, more businesses today, I had another business contact me, how can we help you with Alt Ed services? So again, I think that community piece at the 9, 12 level is very important, and we're working to build that.
And when you have a plan, and you know where your services are and how things are lined up, it's a lot easier to partner with businesses, with community agencies, with post-secondary, because you know where you actually need that support. We're very, we're trying to be intentional and purposeful, as far as the programs and services we put in place, and it's very easy, then, to identify what we need and how we can partner, because ultimately, our goal is to be college, career, and community-ready, every single one of, every single one of our children. And things that we are doing are reflected in our graduation rate. Our graduation rate for the Oshkosh Area School District has gone, you know, up again. We're around the 93% mark, which is way above the state average and is improving each year, and that's because of the services and the alternative education pathways that we do provide. So we're building community through education, we're making sure that we're bringing in the community to help support. This is aligned to the strategic plan, this is completing of Goal, I believe, 4C, that we should have that now completed, and it, once again, feeds into Goal 5D, once again, having every student college, career, and community ready, because that is our goal, and graduating is one of those key pieces, key pieces of that. At your last board meeting, you approved the revisions to Policy 342.4, which was formerly known as Policy for Children at Risk, and it was renamed to be the OASD PK-12 Supportive and Alternative Services Program. So now our policy and the program plan are together, and we will be bringing the program plan to you for approval at the next board meeting. And so we'll open it up for questions.
If I'm remembering correctly, we had received a very nice report in the spring about such programs, and I know one that I zeroed in on was the Riverside Program. And at that time, we were told that there was a waiting list. Can you give us an update on where we are with numbers in the Riverside Program?
We still have a waiting list. We are down to 25 students now.
On the waiting list?
On the waiting list, yes. So we are channeling many of those students to other programs, as we use some of our RTI interventions, and looking at other ways to use the current programs that we're using in our district to service those students.
That seems very reasonable. I know I had been prepared in the spring to ask that we look at adding additional staffing. I really think that, what I think was described in the spring as a six-month wait, if you're 16 or 17 years old, six months is a lot different than if you're over the age of 50. And so, that's a long time in the life of a child to wait for something, whether it's their birthday, or Christmas, or whatever it is. And I don't like the idea of losing any children. I really think we have an obligation to help make every child be successful, not only for him or her, but for their family and the community. And I was asked at that time not to make a motion to add staff, that was going to be part of a larger picture. I'm still waiting for that larger picture, because we had the budget presentation tonight. We've also had a presentation earlier this year on counseling services. Did I say that correctly? And so I'm not sure where that all fits in here, but I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we have issues out there that kids, children, face every day, along with their families, and I'm not one just to spend money for the sake of spending money. We have to be good stewards of every dollar that comes to us as a school system, but I'd like to know where those pieces of addressing the needs of children through the counseling information we received in the spring, and the waiting list at Riverside fit into this whole conversation, including the earlier one tonight on the budget.
And I guess the only thing I would add to that is also the new grant that we received, and how that's going to fit in.
That's true.
The new grant that we received.
The new grant that we received.
Or counseling services.
That, the new grant, in brief, will not, or will be aimed at elementary level. That is by design, and long-term, I think it will have an effect on engaging more students and keeping them in school and engaged earlier in their career, and hopefully, we won't have as many students that, who actually end up in the throes of needing alternative services at older levels in middle and high school ages. So I think we can look forward, and that's not going to happen in the next three months, or even six months. It's going to be a long-term process that's, and the design of the grant is to build capacity within all the teachers in the district, and other staff members as well, to do more that engages students at a higher level and meets their needs, and sets them on a more positive path earlier in their school career. That's, in a real short summary of 37 pages or so, that's what that says. So that's a good point, though, and I see how it might fit in. The other thing that I want to say upfront is that part of the waiting list of that age group that might have been in line for Riverside, we think can be met with the competency-based alternative program that we started housed at North High School. That's an additional bit of staffing that was put in and is reflected in the Location 827 of the budget. So that piece is there. The other thing is that the Second Chance Program is being slightly revised, well, maybe more than slightly, sort of a major overhaul in terms of orienting it so that students who are, who in the past might not have been accepted there, will be accepted there, and we've adopted the whole PBIS framework there as well. And I have to give credit to Stan and to Linda Piran and others for helping make that change, as well as our colleagues at the Department of Human Services in the county, because it's still a partnership program, and we think this will only strengthen that partnership, and it'll be a much better program for students and really meet other students' needs who might otherwise have been channeled into places like Riverside, for example. So I think, I think that's another part of the puzzle, so to speak. In terms of, though, the counseling, well, the whole pupil service.
I didn't mean to short-change the entire pupil service.
No, no, that, no, you didn't, but in terms of that whole report, we're actually still looking at that, and we'll be talking a little more about it at the Education Committee in the morning. But I think that we will see that as we add some of these community services. But I think that we will see that as we add some of these community services related to mental health needs, and we've also strengthened our encompass programs, what, three that we didn't have?
Sounds like the elementary, middle, and high, yep.
So we have a more comprehensive coverage of some of our more severe students with mental health challenges as well as behavioral challenges that I think also will help meet some of these students who might have ended up in these at-risk counts in the past. So I think overall, it is fitting together and it will take a little time before we see the total result, but I think it's on the right path.
Mr. Dito?
Three years ago, myself and Dr. Lowenstein brought a motion up to eliminate this waiting list at Riverside. That was three years ago. The motion ultimately failed because of budget concern. Three years is a long time, too, in the life of a child. And I would like to see this problem rectified. I'm just saying, we need to solve this problem. We have all these other interventions and all these other support things, but if we've got a waiting list for kids over there, there are twenty-five. I know you guys have cut it down from what it was originally. I'd like to see that eliminated. And if we come up with some sort of budgetary consideration, some outline of what it's take to do this, I would very much be in support of something like that.
Well, off the top of my head, I can just say that it would take, if you really wanted to do something, again, add to Riverside, it takes about seventy-five to seventy-eight thousand dollars a section to meet needs. And if there are fourteen students in a section, it's somewhere in that ballpark. I mean, I can just tell you that right off the top. I guess if, you know, that'll be Mr. Mack's call if you, how we want to go forward with that, but we can certainly prepare the information to do that.
And when Sue presented the budget, she had a line in there for other consideration on the financial condition of the district's budget in its final terms. And the door is still open for that. The real issue is balancing that into the future, and that's what we're attempting to do. And if that's the board's desire, we can bring back consideration for looking at that issue. And just remember, these students are not, those are not the same students that were three years ago. They have successfully graduated. It is a constant flow that is a rollover of students that are going into the program or being served in other programs at varying times. And I believe we're down by at least fifty percent of where the waiting list was before. But we can certainly bring that back for consideration and work it through our committee process during this month to have that further discussion. Is that something that the board desires? The other piece that I think we need to have careful consideration on at the meeting that the pupil services presentation was done several months ago, one of the things we talked about, that the number of FTE that have been assigned in counseling and social work are the same as they were some X years ago. If one traces our enrollment in all of our, overall in schools and particularly in middle and high school level, we have a far better ratio than we had five years ago, eight years ago, because we have less students, the number. Now, that may be somewhat counteracted by the fact that we have, we're serving a population with a higher number of needs that may be the counterbalance. But the ratios that exist now in social work and in counseling are better than they have been for at least fifteen years. Because if they've been locked in at that level and you look at the bubble of enrollment that has come through the district, we are in a better position now to serve students than we were previously. But that does not discount, as I said, the reality that we have stressors that are far greater and change in the student population that is different to date than what it may have been ten or fifteen years ago. And I think some of that is certainly compounded with the economy, higher levels of poverty, all the things. Because remember, we have almost double the level of poverty that we had fifteen years ago. That is a serious issue because families in stress have children that are stressed and that adds to the burden on a constant basis. So we will reflect on that, have some discussions with board committees on that and look at what you desire as a board in responding to those issues.
I was just going to say thank you for all your work on that project. That's quite an undertaking. The only thing that I saw that I was just curious about, no criticism at all, is on the criteria for at-risk, there really wasn't a personal social piece. There's academics and behaviors, and I think there was a parent thing in there and things like that, but there wasn't really a personal social criteria to identify somebody who might be at risk. Because somebody could be outstanding in academics, but inside not be doing well, and then would they not meet the criteria or how would you see that?
And everywhere in this plan that's in a gray box is wording that's coming directly from the state statute. And that's the start of the criteria.
Okay, that's just the start.
That's the start. And so when we were talking about philosophy, that our philosophies and what you're talking about doesn't mesh with what the just very generic state criteria is. And that's why we expanded it and we wanted to include the whole child and the whole social, emotional piece behind it because that can be a barrier for any child at any time in their career. So you can be the best, you can be the top-notch student and at some time have a struggle and we want to be there to help you.
Awesome, thanks.
Barbara? Mrs. Leader had said something that I've been pondering here and fully support, and that is, excuse me, that in addition to Riverside, there's certainly other interventions that can be used with students. Mrs. Leader and I have some joint history going back to the East High School Alternative Charter over there. And I remember that there were some students who wanted to come to that school and they really weren't interested in other options that the school district was offering. They just had their mindset that they wanted to come to East High School and that was pretty much it. And it wasn't, in all cases, the best fit for them. So I think it's important that we not take a tube sock approach to this, a one-size-fits-all. And your comments led me to expand upon that, that what works for one child, and a Riverside program may not be the best choice for another child in that we do have extraordinarily devoted and caring teachers who go the extra mile each and every day to try to meet the needs of our students. And sometimes that's well-received and sometimes not so much. So I'm not looking to imply that every child in need of supportive and alternative educational plans should be, at the high school level, should go to a Riverside-type program. But I certainly agree with everything Mr. Dito stated in terms of if we have students who are high schoolers and need additional supports, we need to find a way to help them. We can't afford dropouts, we can't afford children, students who are undereducated when they leave our high schools. It's just, it's not fair to them, it's not fair to the families, it's not fair to the community. And so I'd like us to really explore, as Mr. Dito was suggesting, those twenty-five individuals or whoever else might join the waiting list after seeing this program tonight, and see what can be done to get them on the right path toward graduation and success.
And if I could just expand on that, I'm very excited about what direction we're going with our at-risk plan, our PK supportive alt ed plan, because on that Riverside list right now, we have students that could be utilizing other programs that we're trying to, as much as we can, transition them into those programs. So I think that's been a huge piece of eliminating our list, or I should say, bringing it down somewhat too. And obviously, I'm a very firm believer in Riverside and our philosophy there, but too also looking at what's the best interest of district dollars. And the Riverside program only services students sixteen years of age and older. So we do have a large group of students that we need to service with other alternative education needs that we can't do at Riverside too. So our plan does allow for that. And as Dr. Gavi said, catching them earlier and then channeling them in the appropriate direction.
And to avoid the tube sock issue, Lisa does, that is a major part of her job, is that diagnosis of best fit. And to find tailored socks, as they can be, as tailored socks to deal with because I think on a daily basis, Lisa finds ways to tailor socks as opposed to just dealing with tube socks.
Interesting sock discussions.
Other comments? Thank you very much, and thank you for all of your work on this. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background, oh, with background material on each item, or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Does anyone wish to pull anything?
I would like to pull one C, please.
One C, all right. Anything else?
I'd like to pull two, just to go through them.
Two? Additional items? All right, the board will consider approval of, one, personnel appointments, temporary appointments, resignations, and salary schedule. B, administrator appointment. D, resignation of administrator Manders. Number three, resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in an amount not to exceed seven million three hundred thousand issuance of tax and revenue anticipation promissory notes and participation in the PMA levy and aid anticipation notes program. Four, initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed fourteen million five hundred thousand and calling a public hearing in connection therewith.
So move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Lundberger?
Aye.
Lundberger, aye. Saginaw?
Aye.
Saginaw, aye. Weenhoff?
Aye.
Weenhoff, aye. Dito, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Motion carried.
All right. One, C, be resolved, Resolution one C, be resolved, the Oshkosh area school district Board of Education approve waiving the forty-five day retirement resignation notice requirement set forth in Oshkosh area school district rule two-two-three-point-one, administrative compensation and benefits for Aaron Manders as filed with the Secretary of the Board of Education in accordance with the rules, regulations, and policies of the Board of Education.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
I'm just looking for a clarification on this primarily. Does this also mean that there's no financial penalty involved with this or is it merely waiving the forty-five day notice of the resignation?
Speak to that. Mike's been called to a phone call at the present time, but the issue is that the, I am very sure and I would stand for correction, that the payment of the penalty for leaving the contract still is in effect regarding that. Our goal there is always to be cooperative with other school districts if we find a suitable candidate for replacement. And I will clarify and correct if I misstate that, but we have no waiver on the financial issue. I actually did ask that question previously and was, I have an email right here from Mike Nault indicating that we did not waive those payments, that those payments were in effect. Right. And in fact, on the other side, we're not in administrative position, but right now we're waiting for a release of, subject to a neighboring district finding a replacement kindergarten teacher because we have a kindergarten vacancy that needs to be attended to at E Cook. And we're waiting the release of that individual and we're honoring that same issue of the fact that we will fill it as quickly as we possibly can, but respecting the other district that interrupting them until you have a suitable replacement is not fair.
Thank you.
Other comments? Please call the roll.
Saginaw?
Aye.
Saginaw, aye. Weenhoff?
Aye.
Weenhoff, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lundberger?
Aye.
Lundberger, aye. Motion carried.
Resolution number two, be resolved, the Oshkosh area school district Board of Education approve superintendent's goals for the two thousand fourteen-fifteen school year as followed. Number one, literacy, evaluation of the literacy plan implemented in the previous school year, its effectiveness and its impact on other subjects such as math, social studies, science, et cetera. Number two, oversight of the Lakeside addition and redefining of Southside boundaries. Number three, develop a pupil services strategic plan addressing increased needs of all students. Number four, oversight of the Oshkosh area school district strategic plan and updating of the strategic plan in the two thousand fifteen calendar year. And number five, successful rollout and evaluation of the new teacher compensation model as filed with the Secretary of the Board of Education on September tenth, two thousand fourteen, in accordance with the rules, regulations, and policies of the Board of Education.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
I had this pulled just essentially so that the viewing audience could understand the goals and you're in agreement, I take, of these typical goals, that we're going to be actually focused on this coming year with literacy and the evaluation of our current programs and the Lakeside addition, of course, and pupil services strategic plan and continuation of our strategic plan, which I think is, the way that that is going right now is quite frankly awesome. I mean, you can go, I gotta get a life, but I actually go to the website and look at the updates for the strategic plan a couple of times a month just to see where we're at with it. And then, of course, the successful rollout evaluation of the new teacher compensation model. These are all very important goals and I just wanted our viewing audience to understand that they might not have gotten a copy of the board packet and this kind of stuff to see what we're actually kind of up to next year.
These are the board's goals. This is something that we talked about earlier tonight, but the board will meet again to review the superintendent a year from now or probably earlier and determine whether or not these goals have been met. So it's a yearly process and something that we take fairly seriously. And we schedule quarterly discussions about progress towards them four times a year.
I would like to, I'm not asking for amendment here, but I'm looking at the literacy goal and I think that's quite important that in that literacy goal, that we pay attention to the achievement gap among and between different groups within the school district, not only the regular student performance, but also special education, special needs students, ELL students in the regular population, those students receiving free and reduced lunch and those not, because those gaps are quite concerning to me and I think we need to find ways not only to address the regular population, but also all students.
And we'll make every attempt across the state, if one reads the headlines in the newspaper clippings across the state, the magic of finding those answers have yet to be found, but we will make every attempt to deal with those because frankly, that is an issue that absolutely needs attention and finding every avenue possible to modify that. And I would add, in addition to, of which a fair number of our ELL students are students of color, but also are students of color, or would it be added to that list as well? Because as stated in one of the state headlines today, students do well in the state of Wisconsin except if you're a black child. That's one of the issues that we have to face. Of forty-six, out of forty-six, if I recall.
Yep.
Great. Other comments? Please call the roll.
Weenhoff?
Aye.
Weenhoff, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lundberger?
Aye.
Chumberger, aye. Saginaw?
Aye.
Saginaw, aye. Motion carried.
All right. Request for future agenda items? Seeing none, then Mr. Mack, you have an announcement?
Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Lundberger?
Aye.
Lundberger, aye. Saginaw?
Aye.
Saginaw, aye. Wiedenhoff?
Aye.
Wiedenhoff, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Lundberger?
Aye.
Saginaw?
Aye.
Saginaw, aye. Wiedenhoff?
Aye.
Wiedenhoff, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Lundberger?
Aye.
Saginaw?
Aye.
Saginaw, aye. Wiedenhoff?
Aye.
Wiedenhoff, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Lundberger?
Aye.
Saginaw?
Aye.
Saginaw, aye. Wiedenhoff?
Aye.
Wiedenhoff, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Lundberger?
Aye.
Saginaw?
Aye.
Saginaw, aye. Wiedenhoff?
Aye.
Wiedenhoff, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Lundberger?
Aye.
Saginaw?
Aye.
Saginaw, aye. Wiedenhoff?
Aye.
Wiedenhoff, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Lundberger?
Aye.
Saginaw?
Aye.
Saginaw, aye. Wiedenhoff?
Aye.
Wiedenhoff, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Lundberger?
Aye.
Saginaw?
Aye.
Wiedenhoff?
Aye.
Wiedenhoff, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Lundberger?
Aye.
Saginaw?
Aye.
Saginaw, aye. Wiedenhoff?
Aye.